Delphine Polk, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Legions? Sorry, you were. You want to do it? Yeah. All right, thank you. We'll move to roll call.
Student trustee Massan?
Here.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Here.
Trustee Withrow?
No.
Trustee Johannes? I noticed. Trustee Gonzalez Euan?
Right here.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Here.
Trustee Quinlan?
Here.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Here.
Give a form.
Hey. We will move on to 3.4, affirmation of the statement of cooperation. I'll read it tonight. Over the course of the last two years, we, the Peralta Community College District Board of Trustees, have been engaging in a process of reflection to improve our effectiveness as a board. As a result, we have conducted a critical review of our work and over the last several years through a formal self-evaluation and established meaningful goals. The Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies your commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance in community college leadership and to lead by example for our Peralta colleges. The full statement of cooperation is attached to this agenda item, but in summary, we have committed to, one, build trust and seek to understand each other; two, be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols; and three, model the behavior we want others to exhibit. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action. Thank you. Report of action taken in closed session. Trustee Quinlan?
Yes, so this is our report out on the board meeting on May 28th, 2024, on a motion by trustee Quinlan, seconded by trustee Withrow. The board voted 6-0 to approve the recommendation for dismissal of employee number 9072 on a roll call vote that was, do I list the roll call? Yes, was trustee Delphine Polk, trustee Gonzalez Euan, trustee Withrow, trustee Johannes, trustee Quinlan, and trustee Gonzalez Brito. And abstaining was trustee Napoleon Bellaries. Absent, sorry, was Napoleon, no, Napoleon Ab- Bellaries.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Quinlan. So we'll move to 3.6, approval of the agenda. Oh, sorry.
Board President, we have an amendment to the agenda tonight for item 8.1, removing consideration of the director purchasing services position at this time.
So the motion should make that submission?
Move approval of the agenda with that deletion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Student trustee Massan?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Euan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move to 3.7, approval of the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Student trustee Massan?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Because I wasn't at the last meeting, yeah, abstain.
Thank you, ma'am. Trustee Gonzalez Euan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk? Yes. Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move to 3.8, associated student government reports. Do we have anybody joining us online? Yeah, they're out.
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Just checking. And I don't believe we have a Peralta Classified Senate report tonight either. So we'll move to 3.10, district academic senate report.
Hi, folks. Matthew Goldstein, president of the district academic senate. Thanks for keeping DAS on the agenda. My guests at the board and public are very excited about tonight's budget presentation, so I'll keep it even tighter than usual. As you'll hear from interim VC Jones in a few minutes, the budget will come to you tonight, the tentative budget will come to you tonight, having been approved or regarded with favor by the Planning and Budget Council. The council's approval, I think, points to progress in the planning along budget lines that you've heard me talk about for several months here. You might recall that not too long ago, I was here complaining that the budget you were obliged to take up had not been approved by the shared governance body, so this does mark a serious improvement. And so thanks to the board for being responsive to faculty concerns and thanks to VC Jones and his office for reaching out and working with faculty and staff to make sure that you had this opportunity to review a budget that has the blessing of the shared governance structure. I'd add too that Chancellor Gilkerson's appearance at the last PBC was really helpful and that it showed support for the process and for shared governance. And you'll tire of hearing faculty say this eventually, but this is really refreshing to faculty that there's this sort of high-level administrative interest and regard for the shared governance process, so we look forward to, again, continuing to improve the PBIM and continuing to see this kind of support and interest in shared governance. For all those improvements, there are some deficiencies in tonight's budget. It wouldn't be a DAS report if I didn't have some complaints to offer you as well. But one item I'll single out is if we look at the budget reductions at the five district sites, you'll see that they're not proportionate, so the three smaller colleges all are coughing up roughly a half million bucks. Laney, about 800,000, and the district, which gets the same amount of resources as Laney, more or less, is only contributing as much as the small colleges. So that's the sort of thing that really sticks in the craw of the colleges. And you'll hear more about that, I'm sure. But again, we're hopeful that we'll make improvements in budgeting as we continue to work together. Also, I would point out that Chancellor Gilkerson and I have agreed that the perfect is the enemy of the good, so we'll continue to work toward the good, I suppose. So thanks again to Dr. Jones and his team. Thanks to the board for changing the budget and calendar, and we look forward to continuing to make progress in the months ahead. Thanks very much.
Thank you. So with that, we'll move to 3.11, public communication on matters that are not on the agenda. Okay, no public comment. And with that, we'll move to 3.12, chancellor's report.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Board President Gonzalez Brito, trustees. I'm pleased to be here tonight to give a chancellor's report. First of all, as we're queuing up the slides, I want to welcome Dr. Lily Espinoza, who is sitting in, the new vice president of student services at Laney College, sitting in for Dr. Rudy Besikoff, who's off tonight, so thank you for being here in his stead. All right, well, happy Pride Month, everyone. Pleased to be here. Appreciate the opportunity, so how you doing over there? Oh, okay, you're sharing everything. Sharing your emails. So look at me. Hi, everybody, look over here. Yes, 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 we're so excited. You know, I just could feel it in the air, you know, tonight. So I'll go ahead and get started. For first of all, we learned, how you doing? Okay, my poor. I wanted to say hardest working. I wanted to thank Mark Johnson, incredible Mark Johnson, the director of marketing. We have an incredible team here on board. Good? You can hear me, though. Okay, so in memoriam, first I want to start the meeting with giving, we learned last week from that the former Peralta Community College District Chancellor, Dr. Donald H. Godbold, passed away on May 25th. He was 95 years old. Dr. Godbold, a veteran in the Korean War, originally joined Peralta in 1973 as the president of Merritt College. In 1977, he became vice chancellor of educational services, and he served as the chancellor from 1980 to 1988. He was a leader and groundbreaker. He was the first African-American chancellor here in the Peralta Community College District, which also made him the first black chancellor in a multi-college district in the state of California. He was the founder of the Peralta Association of African-American Affairs and a co-founder of the National Council of Black American Affairs. Following his career at Peralta, he became the executive director of the Oakland-based nonprofit Alameda County Youth Development, Inc., a position he held for another 10 years. He opened doors for careers in education for men of color and has positively influenced thousands of lives with his mentorship and leadership. A memorial service was held for Dr. Goldberg Gold earlier today, my condolences to his family, loved ones, and many friends and colleagues. In addition, we also just learned that Belinda Van Buehler, a former student and employee at College of Alameda over the past 26 years, has passed away. Belinda first joined College of Alameda as a student in 1998 and soon began working in DSPS, Disability Student Support Programs and Services, now called Student Accessibility Services. After earning her associate's degree at COA in 2003, Belinda was hired as an hourly instructional aide. For the past 10-plus years, she has served as the SAS Support Services Specialist, supporting students and faculty across the campus. Belinda was friendly, outgoing, and caring person, and she loved the beach, especially down in Pacific Grove. As you can see, Pacific Grove there on the screen. She was always ready for a conversation in the parking lot, a warm smile or a needed hug. And I'd like to request, Board President, that we close today's meeting in the memory of Dr. Donald Gold- Godbold and Belinda Van Buehler. On May 30, Thursday, May 30th, my office hosted a district service center employee appreciation event in the atrium. I had the opportunity to recognize employees reaching significant milestones in their careers with the Peralta Community College District by presenting certificates for five, 10, 15 years of service or more, culminating with 30 years of service award going to Shawnee Martinez, Martinez, and Carmen Fairley. Carmen was there with her husband and announced that she will be retiring in June, and I wish her all the best in her retirement and gratitude for all of her service. We had a great time recognizing our coworkers, celebrating these important career milestones, meeting new colleagues, and munching on tasty tacos. The taco and dessert buffet from Laney College Food Services was outstanding, and I want to specially thank Teshada Henry for helping organize the fun gathering for us. NASPA is the Association of Student Affairs and Administrators in Higher Education, and on June 4th, I had the honor of participating as a speaker in a NASPA-sponsored webinar, "Shifting Institutional Conditions to Advance Racial Equity in Community College", along with faculty members from San Diego State University and Fresno State Universities. Amid increased resistance and pushback to the DEI efforts, we shared insights from our research and practice on specific strategies to advance racial equity efforts across community colleges with a specific focus on a model of two dimensions, which is the level of organizational support and shared responsibility. I hope people will read the work. This is also recently being published by UC Berkeley, so I want to thank my colleagues, Dr. Felix and Dr. Angel Gonzalez. Classified, the Peralta Community College District was well-represented at the Classified Leadership Institute 2024 Conference in Riverside that happened from June 5th through the 7th. Peralta attendees include Hope Lane and Katrina Santos, the president and vice president for Laney College Classified Senate, Angela Kimball and Louis Martinez, Martinez, president-elect and senator from the College of Alameda Classified Senate, and Jamil Tier from the District Service Center, Department of General Services, who is the newly-elected Region 8 representative of the California Community Colleges Classified Senate. Katrina Hope and Jamil led a presentation called Professional Development: What's Next?, which was a continuation of their 2023 CLI presentation, Professional Development: How to Plan and Fund a Successful Event. In this year's presentation, the team discussed securing funding via the IEPi, or Institutional Effectiveness Partnership Initiative, as well as creating and maintaining professional development committee. The team session had over 40 participants. Great to see more Peralta thought leadership being shared among classified professionals across the state. Yesterday, here in the boardroom, we held public forums for the three finalists for the chief operating officer position. My gratitude to the search committee representatives made up of faculty, classified professionals, and administrators for screening committee candidates and presenting three outstanding finalists for consideration. Special thanks to Dr. Denise Richardson, president of Berkeley City College, who chaired the committee on my behalf and moderated the forums yesterday. The Zoom recordings are posted, along with feedback forums and candidate biographies on the GEMS article noted on the slides. There's a link on the Peralta website homepage to the GEMS article as well. Your input is really important to me. Please submit your feedback on each finalist by midnight Wednesday, June 12th. So I plan to review the feedback first thing in the morning with help to inform my decision. Many people have noted that this is a strong group of finalists. People are recognizing the great work we are doing here in the Peralta colleges every day, and I really want to just thank our three finalists and those who applied for wanting to be a part of this incredible organization. Finally, I want to end my report. I want to bring us back to while we are here. I think about those who've given their life of service that we talked about earlier today, Belinda Van Buehler, Dr. Godbold, and many others here. And at our last board meeting on May 20th, took place right after that exhilarating week of commencement programs at all four colleges, followed by the Long Memorial Day weekend. Since then, our marketing department has posted photos and videos from all the college commencements, as well as special cohort graduation ceremonies. Links to those videos and graduations are on our site, peralta.edu/graduation. So I want to circle back and share some of those graduation moments on video. Peralta TV producer Angel Hunter, amazing Angel Hunter, put together this nice short video compiling highlights from each of the college commencement ceremonies with comments from graduating student speakers. Thank you, Angel, and thanks to everyone for supporting the students of the Peralta colleges.
Walls and computer screens. Seek out and build communities wherever you go. Surround yourself with people who inspire you, challenge you, and support you.
To my children, thank you for being the best supporters and motivators of my life. And the six degrees that I earned are all due to you.
I want to express my deepest gratitude to the world-class faculty and administration of Berkeley City College. Thank you. You have changed my life.
As we step out into the world, let us remember that our future is ours to shape and that anything is possible if we believe in ourself and never lose sight of our dreams.
Four years ago, I made the biggest commitment of my life, that I would follow my passion instead of prioritizing dollar signs. I vowed that I would never again let fear or circumstance stop me from achieving my evolution.
Let's step into this new chapter of our lives with great promise, great hopes, and knowing that our future is brighter than our past. Congratulations, class of 24. We did this.
Your presence means the world to me and my fellow graduates.
Create the world you wish to see. Congratulations, class of 2024.
Thank you. That concludes our chancellor's report for tonight.
Thank you, chancellor. So we are going to move to 4.1, presentation, Consider First Reading and Presentation of the Peralta Community College District Tentative Budget.
Thank you so much, Board President. Tonight, I'm pleased to have our interim vice president, vice chancellor of administrative services, Dr. Nathaniel Jones, present the tentative budget to you tonight.
Okay.
Do you want to stand up?
When?
Yeah.
I can do it.
Thank you.
Is that on now? Okay, here we go. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to present the 2024-25 Tentative Budget. As the chancellor indicated, it is the first read. I would ask your indulgence to allow me to get through the presentation, and then I will happily answer any questions that you may have. All right, next slide. I wanted to first start this presentation with some acknowledgement. You know, the finance team has done a lot of work to not only prepare this tentative budget, but to do it in a responsive manner to the feedback that we have received. And so I wanted to thank them for all of their hard work. But lest we forget, this is the budget for the entire district, and it reflects the input of district staff as well as our colleagues at the colleges and our participatory governance bodies. And so I'd like to also thank the PBC co-chairs and members for providing input, guidance, and direction related to this tentative budget, as well as valuable input and insight provided by our administrative colleagues who sit around the chancellor's cabinet and the chancellor herself. This does reflect a community effort in putting this forward. So I'd like to thank all of those who worked on this alongside me. Next slide. As Dr. Goldstein mentioned, I'd like to highlight the degree of shared governance engagement that we utilize. In development of the allocation and target for FTEF, we received input by a group of faculty leaders that contributed to that process, as well as active engagement on the part of the academic senate, the planning and budget committee, as well as the the participatory governance council in coming up with that allocation. Additionally, we also began the budget process early based on the calendar that the board of trustees had approved. And last week, on June 6th, unanimously, the Planning and Budget Council voted in support and in favor of the tentative budget. Next slide. Couple of things that I wanted to make note of. First of all, the tentative budget largely is a reflection of the information that we received from the state chancellor's office in the January, in the January budget proposal, not the May revise. And I can get into that when we talk about the May revise, I'll indicate why that is. So I wanted you to, I'm going to hit a few highlights of the January budget proposal. So the January budget proposal included a cost of living adjustment of 0.76%. And the state chancellor's office communicated that they would apply a deficit factor as of 2%. It also included 0.5% enrollment growth allocation. Then what's also important is that it indicates and reestablished or reiterated the fact that the 24-25 fiscal year will set the new funding floor, the level below which our state apportionment will not fall. Okay, and then they also provided continued support in terms of pursuing a lease revenue bond issuance statewide for affordable student housing. That COLA was applied to the student-centered funding formula rates that are reflected there, as well as for certain other categorical programs. Next slide. So with that in mind, our total computational revenue would be about $145 million with the deficit factor included, and as I mentioned before, certain categorical programs would see an increase. This is far fewer than the actual number of categorical programs that we have, but these are the ones that were selected to also get an increase in compensation related to the COLA. Next slide. On May 10th, the May revise came out. And so there were some changes that are reflected in the May revise that differed somewhat from the January. Now, the May revise came out on May 10th, and then the joint analysis came out a few days later on the 14th. There is no reasonable way to make all the necessary changes to accommodate revising all of the data in that short period of time. And then the other- And then the other consideration is this still isn't final. The legislature still has to come to agreement with the executive branch and adopt the budget. That doesn't happen until on about June 15. So it would not be prudent to make changes related to the May revise and then turn right around and have to undo those possible things for the final budget. So what we do is base the tentative budget on the January proposal, recognizing that it is really a continuing funding resolution so that we have the fiscal authority to make payroll and other commitments as of July 1. But the final budget is approved in September. And that is approved based on the actual budget act that was approved and signed by the governor. Okay? So here are some of the major changes. The first change is that the first change is that the COLA increased from 0.76 to 1.07%. And similarly to the January proposal, $13 million is for COLA for those same categorical programs. Retain the enrollment, and they're also retaining the $60 million one-time funding to support nursing baccalaureate program offering. They also added $35 million for projected related Vision 2030 priorities. What they are, don't know yet, but that was also a change. And then there was a capital allocation for an existing Prop 51 continuing project. Next slide. And so here are essentially similar things, similar table as what you saw in the January proposal, adjusted with a different COLA, showing both the Student Center Funding Formula changes in rates, as well as some of the categorical programs' changes in COLA. Next slide. Next one. So in terms of generally speaking, I wanted just to remind you that we're looking at the that when we develop the budget in general, we're maintaining our commitment to adhering to our reserve policy, which is two months of operating reserves. Additionally, when we do the allocation by location, we're using a three-year FTES average for that allocation or split. And then we also, as a fundamental matter of consideration, seek to put forward a balanced budget where the expenses are not in excess of the revenues. Next slide, please. So moving right along, one of the things that I mentioned earlier that our total computational revenue was $145.4 million. What I want to reflect, and I'll show you in a moment, is that this was actually based on the whole harmless calculation. And when we get to that slide, I'll walk you through that a little bit. And then, as I mentioned, as an assumption, this includes a deficit factor of 2% and it includes the 0.76 in terms of COLA. We have, you know, we have lottery funding there, $249 per FTS. And then there, we have parcel tax. Now, one of the things that's different this time is last two years, there was a variation in terms of the percentage of the parcel tax that went towards instruction. And this time, we standardized it to be more consistent with the Student Center Funding Formula and set it across the board at 70%. Next slide. And so I'm not going to go through all of these, but these are just the high-level, critical assumptions that we have maintained in other budget years. But then also, just the ones that I will take a quick moment to highlight is the fact that we have a contingency, albeit very, very small, of only a half million dollars. And bad debt, we're assuming that's going to be $2 million. It reflects an increase in SIS rates, which is an increase of 7.4% in dollars and cents. It's about a million and a half dollars. Next slide. And then, and then there are other expenses. The ones here that I want to highlight just for a moment is to highlight the fact that we have an obligation to meet our OPEB liability. That's $17 million, of which $6.7 million is coming from the general fund. And that was presented to the Board of Trustees a couple of months ago by our colleagues at MacCarley. So they, back from MacCarley, they came, they presented the OPEB plan, and this just reflects that that information has been incorporated into the budget. 10.3 is coming from the trust fund. Next slide, please. And so these two tables, the first table is to show you how by location the parcel tax is allocated. So we have that basically Alameda getting 1.5 million, Berkeley 1.8, Laney 2.9, Merit 1.8, for a total of $8 million. Similarly, we use a similar approach, using the FTE three-year average to show how the FTEF is allocated. Now, this year, we increased the FTEF from 960 FTEF, which is what we had last year, to 975. 5 for general FTEF, and then 10 for dual enrollment. So, next slide, please. And so this just is a reminder of what you saw in the OPEB presentation, where the amount that is anticipated for this year, $17 million, split between the general fund at 6.7, and then 10.3 coming from the trust one. Next slide, please. So with all of that, what we do is then calculate what the projected expense budget will be based on all of those assumptions that you saw, both revenue and expenses. And so we, so, but we also needed to add some additional things that we knew were going to happen. So one of those things, if you didn't know, you guys cost money when we have elections. So we have to build that cost in. So that was there. And then, you know, there's normal increases to salary and benefits. So we want to make sure we reflected that, an increase. Also, additional increases in utility costs, as well as making a change in terms of the amount of funding that we're going to have to cover in terms of the general fund that we didn't, that was previously budgeted to come out of parcel tax, needed to be accommodated as well. And then with contracts, there was always sort of a bit of an escalation. So long story made short, we estimated that the revenues would be about $164 million in terms of the state apportionment. But the expense budget, with all of those expense adjustments taken into consideration, is actually $175 million, creating an $11.2 million variance that we needed to solve. Next slide. So with input from a number of stakeholders, we developed a number of options or a menu of solutions based on analysis. So we did various expense analysis from the previous fiscal year, looking at expenses, where do we spend money? How do we spend these resources to come up with thoughtful, data-informed options on how do we make reductions in a thoughtful manner? So we came up with some different options. And so we landed on three strategies. Next slide, please. And so what we ended up is utilizing temporary salary and budget savings. As you may or may not know, most districts budget fairly conservatively. And what does that mean? When it comes to positions, they make an underlying assumption that all of their positions that are in their position control are going to be filled for the entirety of the fiscal year. In fact, that never happens. And so rather than eliminating some of those vacant positions, we took a more thoughtful approach by looking at historic norms of what the actual fill rate would be and budgeted those savings as a budget reduction that we know that we're going to get based on historic norms. And then that way, we will then, as the year goes on, we will do appropriate position-by-position transfers to put that in our budget hold that we are creating. So it's a different approach, but it's one based on data, based on analysis. And typically, the amount of savings that we have accrued in terms of salary and benefits is somewhere between $8 to $14 million in a given year. So this is reasonable and very appropriate. And then the other one was we we wanted to create an opportunity for even more engagement and participation. And so what we did was set up a budget reduction target. And we're going to develop and empower cross-functional teams to work on coming up with strategies to come up with $2.1 million in savings over the course of the fiscal year. And then the last approach that we used was to, and one that we've used in the past, quite frankly, was to allocate $3 million to reductions across the various locations. So, next slide, please. And so what that looks like is 3 million allocated in this manner. You know, 578,000 district, 511 COA, and you can read the rest of it. Now, my colleague, I don't know, there he is, he's in the back, had some issues with this. But let me tell you, it's fair. The methodology that was used, we can't pick and choose. What we did was agree on a particular methodology and apply it to all locations. And that methodology is because most of the cost that's associated with the reduction and with the budget is personnel. So we use percent of total personnel salary at each location. And so if we take all the salaries at all the colleges and the district and add it up, and then divide it, and then take the amount for each of those and divide it by that total, that's a percentage. And we took that percentage and we applied that to the reduction. And so what you see is a reflection of the number of people and how much they earn at each of these locations. That creates the percentage. That's the fair way of doing it. Because it not only reflects where the people are, but it also reflects how much those individuals are compensated. And so, but recognizing that the district is not just one unit, we also use the same methodology and applied it to the different units or areas within the district to allocate those reductions for the districts. Next slide, please. So here is essentially a high-level overview of our FY 24-25 budget. And one of the things that I want to make really, really clear, and I'll get into a few of these details, is when you actually approve this budget, you're not just approving $167 million budget. You're actually approving authorization to spend close to $390 million. Okay? That includes all funds. Okay? And in addition, that actually, the other funds actually represent the largest share of our budget. I'm going to talk about that in a moment. But quickly, to run through the columns, the first major column, beginning balance, that actually is any funds that were carried over from the previous year. And then we allocate whatever we're anticipating in terms of revenues coming in, and then what the expenditures that we are planning. And then the difference is what we are projecting the ending balance would be. And so we do that for both the unrestricted general fund and the restricted general fund, and then all of our myriad of other funds, funds on 3 through 89. And so what that gives you is an anticipated expense budget overall for all funds of $389.9 million. Revenues that we are expecting coming in are at 307. And the difference between those is we're planning on utilizing some of the carryforward balances from previous years. What are some of those? Some of those would be things for capital, that we have, for projects that we have money, but we never plan on spending all that in one year. But it's to reflect those kinds of things. Next slide, please. The point that I wanted to make here is that the vast majority of our resources are highly restricted. They're not fungible. You can't use them for any kind of thing that you want. You have to maintain, you know, compliance with the restriction. One thing that you may recall for some of you who was actually on the board a year and a half ago or two years ago, we actually had an audit finding because we had $7,800 against Careers Act that should not have been spent in that manner. And it reflected as a finding. We immediately corrected it, and it was fine, but it was something that the auditors noted. It is something that we have to pay very, very careful attention to. And so, you know, there have been some comments, "Well, you have all this money, can't you just use it for this, that, or the other?" No, we can't. We really do have to make sure that we use it in a manner in which it was intended to be used. Next slide. And so essentially, this is our unrestricted general fund, broken out by location. With the district, as you may know, holds the reserves for the entire district. And then the remainder are allocated based on the FTS by location. And these numbers reflect the reductions that we have already planned. They show the $11.2 million that have been indicated previously. Next slide. And then this is showing a somewhat higher level of detail of the total computational revenue or our apportionment revenues. And one thing that I would enjoy your attention to is if you look there where it says Student Center Funding Formula Calculated TCR, that's taking all the three measures or components of the Student Center Funding Formula, taking our data, calculating it with the rates that are applicable. And if we were to get funded based on the Student Center Funding Formula calculation, our revenues would be $129.5 million. But we are not. We apply the whole harmless calculation. And based on that calculation, we have a revenue of $148.5 million. And then when you apply the deficit factor, hence you get the $145.5 million. And so going forward, we're going to do it two ways. One is we'll run through the Student Center Funding Formula calculation. And if that's higher, we'll get the higher. Otherwise, we are going to get whatever our TCR is for this year, which is going to be $145.5 million. That's how the change is different. Because they're no longer applying a COLA in an accumulative manner. It's either this amount or whatever we produce under the Student Center Funding Formula. Next slide. Okay, and so the, so what we did was take twenty four, twenty five and sort of project through for several years through twenty seven, twenty eight. Really, the the main thing that I wanted to reflect here is to tell you that we know that all things else being equal, that our revenues aren't gonna be changing that much. But we will still have all those kinds of cost increases unless we remedy or bring down those curves. Now, just like for this year, we had to make reductions of eleven point two million, we built in making those reductions to have a balanced budget. What will those strategies be? TBD. We haven't determined that yet. But that's the work that we need to do in subsequent years. But we are planning now and we are gonna be actively engaged in work now to help prepare for that eventuality. Next slide. I think this, and so, not that I want you necessarily to believe, um although I think I'm we're pretty good in terms of doing the modeling and things like that. But we ran our calculations and to validate that we're correct, go in, we went into the um State Chancellor's Office estimator and pull down their projection. And lo and behold, their projection matches ours. So you have confidence that this is right. Um, next slide. So, bottom line, um, this is, as I would call it, um, a building year. We have to really think about how do we look at substantially changing or bending the cost curve down to more appropriately align with our projected revenues, which are in the next several years likely to remain flat. And so we have to spend the time this year not only addressing the shortfall for the current year, but planning on what are going to be more systemic cost reduction strategies that we're going to put in place for subsequent years in order to close that gap. And so while this is your first read, um, we are hopeful that you will approve this tentative budget. So, thank you for your time and I will happily take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. And so we'll take any questions or discussion. Just be honest.
Okay, first, thank you. Uh, as you mentioned at the beginning of this, this is much cleaner. Everyone's quote-unquote happy as uh Dr. Goldstein also mentioned, quote-unquote happy for now. Um, and the schedule is a little bit easier to follow. My question is just more of like to clarify, it was um slide seventeen?
Okay, let me get there.
So let me look at my notes.
I know I went through some of that a little bit fast, but yes.
Yeah, the savings from vacancies, the six point one million?
Six point one, yes ma'am.
Yes, so, alright, so I have a couple of questions re- regarding this. I understand that you said you um based on the vacancies from previous years, which makes sense as far as an approach. Um, I just wonder how many years because what's happened in the past years that these vacancies were open simply because we didn't have the money for it, not because we were doing fine without these people in place. And so to continue to not have the vacancy, I'm just wondering.
Okay, so um, two things. We did do, we looked at multiple years, um, number one. Um, but number two is even though we took out those positions, we still had other positions that were fully budgeted for the entirety of the year. And those positions had vacancies during the course of the year. It's not just the vacancies that we had at the beginning of the year, as you know, um during the middle of the year, people go, we have failed searches for ones that we're actively pursuing. And so that changes. So what we did was to take a look at um the overall percentage of the positions that are filled at any given time over the course of the year. And then looked at that, apply that to the overall amount of um resources, I'll stand back. Um, over that amount of time and look at how much that equate to in dollars and cents. And so we came up with a conservative number that we think would be um would be able to be achieved over the entirety of the fiscal year.
Okay, so then to follow up, you did say that you would in later on, like figure out a way to put, I don't know how you how you said it.
Yeah, essentially, so 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 here's, okay, so the position is fully budgeted. And so the approach would be, and this is very operational, but I'll explain it, is that what we will do is on a quarterly basis, any vacant position, we will do um a journal and transfer that funding from those particular line items into this quote-unquote budgetary saving line that we'll create and finance.
Doctor Jones, could I, could I add um something here for a second?
Yes, ma'am.
So I think it'd be really important just for the community and uh the trustees to sort of see, like one of the things is we were presented with like, right, an eleven million dollar budget reduction. The district just took a reduction at the mid-year point. And so really, I want to thank Dr. Jones for really helping us come to a really elegant solution. And so one of the things that we discussed was we know that we have temporary employee, right, compensation savings that happens, like Dr. Jones said, from failed searches, from, you know, it takes us six months to hire when somebody resigns and we didn't know that. And it's a good amount of money, right? We look at about a fifteen percent vacancy rate across the institutions, like just on a regular basis. So these aren't positions we're eliminating. These are positions that we know we're hiring. It's just there are dollars we're saving from their salary and benefits from being. So rather than take the cuts and push them out to the district and say, okay, all locations, just like we'll cut, we'll split the cut um directly, this was an opportunity for us to really think about it differently and actually bring more, I think, um sunshine to the budget, which is to say, and you saw that in that what we have at the district in terms of, um again, uh, money that's here at the beginning of the year. So you saw that um that we have it every year. We know we're already gonna do it. So why would we make people cut to the bone, right? Our institutions cut to the bone. And so took a really conservative estimate of that um percentage of the millions of dollars that we often save at about a four percent and said, like, how do we actually say? So we talked about it quite extensively to decide that that was sort of a way to like actually uh be more transparent about the budget ahead of time and put that in versus sort of what you see now, which is that is sitting on as as revenue and savings on the books at like twenty nine um that you see now as we're building this nearest budget. So it's building in what we already know is happening year after year. So that's some of, I hope it gives a little bit of um context to uh what it is. So these are not positions we're eliminating.
Yes, thanks. I mean, I I knew it wasn't eliminated. I just wanted to make sure we we weren't sort of, I know we're not doing this purposely, but sort of taking advantage of current employees who feel as though that they're, they're already understaffed or under managed or under blank, you know? Um, so I I I get what you're saying about the budget. Is this something that you're kind of taking?
Tears, yes, there are challenges there in terms of staffing. However, when we're when we are trying to recruit for those positions, this gives us an opportunity to benefit from the length of time that it's gonna take from a budgetary standpoint, rather than assume that um it's gonna be a hundred percent filled when we know it isn't and we don't have the opportunity to benefit from it, but actually imposing in addition to that, savings that we're likely to have, on top of that, providing a an additional cut.
Okay, and so then, like, I completely understand. I just wanna, I guess, push further to make sure we like reassess this really, because this is gonna be the first year of this. So really, reassess this next year to see how it worked out and.
Exactly, and that's the, and that's the intent, is this is, uh, as I said, sort of a a an analysis and rebuilding year. So there's gonna be a lot of critical analysis being done um to not only determine to ensure that what we are doing for the current fiscal year um works and works reasonably well. But how do we make um systematic, structural um changes to our cost curve in the future?
Doctor Jones, is that, uh, so on average, we save eight to fourteen million? And what we're seeing here is actually below that, six point one million of what we averaged.
Right, because we wanted to be conservative because the other option is, okay, let's say, for example, um, we budgeted at six million, but let's say we budgeted at eight million, um and we ended up with, say, um you know, only six. Then we would have fell short and we would have an out-of-balance um budget. So what we would then have would be a reduction in our ending balance, which would actually be below our two percent. That's always our default. Um, that's one way of dealing with that, but we would most likely end up with a lower than our um policy ending balance. So we would still make it work, but what would be sacrificed is the position of our ending balance.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Jones, for this. Um, so on the same slide, I had a question about the district-wide discretionary budget reduction teams. Either you or Chancellor Gilkerson, can you speak to that a little bit more? Thank you.
Yeah, so so the um, so the intent is to have faculty, staff, and administrators work together to look at some of the analyses that we've done to identify areas that we can make reductions to achieve a total of two point one four million dollars. And I'll give you a couple of examples. So one would be, you know, we looked at the amount of um expenditures in terms of consultants and so forth. And so um that we think we can potentially um reduce by carefully examining the work that's being done to see which ones could reasonably be done um in-house as compared to needing to hire someone based on expertise that is outside of the district, like architects, engineers, and those kinds of um things, for example. But then also, we also looked at um things like we have vendors that we are using at three and four colleges, and everyone's doing their own thing. We can leverage our purchasing power to get discounted rates if we did it together. So it's that kind of um opportunities as well as others. Like I said, we did a lot of analysis on on what the expenditure patterns were and where there are um opportunities. I obviously didn't include all of that data um in this presentation, but that work was done that we would then hand off to those teams to um to begin working on that.
No, that's really great to hear. I know that we've spent a lot of money on consultants in the past and I'm really, um, it's great to see that we're gonna be reducing some of that and keeping it in-house.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then I have one more question under the location specified budget reduction. And then that's allocating the remaining budget shortfall of three, three million. So is that per campus and the district office?
That includes, yes, that three million is in total for all five locations.
Okay.
Broken out, um, next slide.
Right.
Broken out according to this schedule here.
So I have, I have a number of questions. Uh, on slide thirteen, when we're looking at the parcel tax summary, uh, my understanding of the parcel tax is that it's all supposed to be spent on instruction or student support. Is the non-instruction considered stu-, is that all being spent on student support?
Yes, it is. It is. It's just that the, we standardize the amount that's going to be expended for instruction. But like I mentioned earlier, with any restricted funds, we make sure that we're spending it in the manner in which the restrictions allow.
Okay, um, on slide fifteen, um, so last year, well, let's see, um, I can't remember when it was, um, last year, I guess, uh, in in late spring, we voted, uh, the board voted to participate in a state um offer to provide our uh part-time faculty with full-time benefits, with full benefits. And based on that, the projection, the way the state saw it, we were gonna actually save money and get money back from the state. So whatever happened with that? I haven't heard anything about it since we voted on it.
You know, um, if memory serves me correctly, we ended up with um an allocation for this year. We had to submit a report to the State Chancellor's Office. And I'd have to to look at the um, at what we actually received, but um, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. It wasn't dumb, a ton of money. But but that was the allocation. Because remember, this, they um didn't, they were guaranteeing only fifty percent, but only under certain circumstances would you get a hundred percent. We did not. We got the fifty percent and it ended up being about a hundred and seventy eight, just under two hundred thousand dollars. I can, if if you really wanna know, I can um look up the number and can give you the exact number, but that's um, but that's what it was.
Okay, so we are paying those.
Yeah, we we did that. We did, we did, we did that, yes.
And we'll continue to receive that
Well.
income from the state in the.
Not necessarily. Um, we may, um, but um, and we have it out in the collective bargaining agreement that if those resources aren't there, we could um um terminate that. But but yes, as long as the state um funds it, we will continue to offer the part-time health insurance program in the expanded version that was um approved by the by the state. But once again, with some of these reductions, they did not provide any additional funding. Um, and either the January or the May revised to deal with that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my last question is on the state's TCR calculations. Um, they show um our revenue actually decreasing for next year. Um, and I think in our budget uh propos- uh outlook, it showed us uh our uh SCIF calculated revenue uh decreasing also. I'm just wondering what that's based on.
You know, I'd have to look at that. It in it, in some ways, uh, it probably is a reflection of what they were assuming were the various uh metrics, but it doesn't really matter. Um, the reason that the SCIF calculation doesn't matter is that's not what we're being funded on.
Right.
Okay, we're being funded based on max TCR determined by the whole harmless calculation, which after this year essentially goes away anyways. And the TCR that we have calculated, the hundred and forty eight point five million, that's what we're gonna be be guaranteed to receive going forward until such time that the calculated Student Center Funding Formula revenue exceeds the one forty eight.
Right, but my concern is showing a lower figure somehow indicates to me that there, this either the state or we're expecting to uh not increase our enrollment or that the three-year formula figures out in a way that we're gonna actually lose enrollment for that three-year average. And I'm just curious why, why we're.
They may have um used slightly different um assumptions than than we did. We based ours on the most recent data that we had submitted in the three twenty report. They don't update their estimator um as frequently as we have access to some of that data.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
First of all, congratulations on getting a an affirmative vote out of the shared governance group. I think that's um, uh, real progress for our district and and I think, you know, everybody deserves hearty round of congratulations for um that collaboration. I wanna focus a little bit on the, on the reserves. We have, I think, our board policy is a ten percent reserve is a minimum. That's not the board policy right now?
We changed it.
Um, year. By board policy, seventeen and a half percent?
No, it's two months of operating reserve.
Two months of operating revenue. So I calculate that at about twenty seven million. What is it? What do you think two months of operating?
It's about twenty seven, twenty eight million dollars, whatever. Um, we s- we have it done stated in in there, but that's a, that's in the right ballpark.
Okay.
Twenty seven, twenty nine million dollars is um is is about right. Um, but now, once again, being um completely um candid, that is that is based on unaudited um expenses and that we're projecting that for because we haven't closed the book yet for the current fiscal year.
Sure.
And so we um so we probably um estimated a little high, um just to make sure that we could uncover it, but yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's right. It's based on what we expend um for the current year. Um and so then we, you know, figure out that, do the math, and say that's our man.
Okay, I'm looking at page thirty-nine of the budget book, and it's just the audited versus the adopted budget and then the unaudited actials. And as I look at line items for like full-time academic and part-time academic, if we just look down at expenses, it's, you know, line one and four. There are these big variances there, and it's always a little confusing to me. It's like, so we budgeted thirty-one million dollars for full-time academic. We ended up spending twenty-five point five or something like that. With the part-time, we budgeted um nine million. But then we ended up spending eighteen million.
Yeah.
Um with books and supplies, this year we were closer in. But like in last year, you know, we were two million and then we ended up spending, anyway, we ended up spending. There are these huge variances, and I'm trying to figure out, how do we understand this?
Okay.
And and like when there are such big swings in budget categories, it doesn't, and I don't, I don't, I really don't mean this to be insulting.
Okay.
I like, I really don't. It's just confusing to try to understand, how can we budget this way? And then actually have it turn out?
Okay, well, I'm, well, good question, and I have an answer. So um as we were talking about earlier, we had previously budgeted a hundred percent. They, I mean, fill rate for all positions, including faculty positions. So what happens when we did not hire that faculty position that's in in the budget? What do you think happens with that?
We backfill it part-time and so that's.
Bingo, that's exactly right. That's exactly right. We fill that need with a part-timer. And where do we get the money from to pay that? From the full-time that we didn't hire.
Okay.
And so unless you are a better prognosticator than I am, I don't know when folks are gonna come and go and all of those sorts of things. So we base it, we use our best judgment in terms of anticipating what the costs are. We tell you upfront all of the key assumptions that we use to inform our projections and our estimates. And then the chips fall where they may because we don't control that. But the logic for how we came up with the numbers are 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 vetted. They're thoughtful, they're appropriate, but we don't know what's gonna happen in the future.
So what's, what's curious to me is that we're, we're now trying to anticipate that and so we're budgeting in roughly six million dollars.
Exactly, that's exactly right.
Um are those six million dollars of vacant positions, that's also inclusive of faculty positions?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so next year, we've changed our calculation and we say we think we're gonna get closer to fourteen and a half million. So we're trying to come up with a more accurate number on the part-time expenditure. And then, but what we haven't done next year in the candidate budget, we've gone back to thirty-one point five million on the full-time. We've increased in the part-time. And so it looks like the overall amount that we're budgeting on on uh instruction is actually bit higher than in the previous year. Is that, am I, am I reading that correct?
Yes, it is. And the reason is because um just like with all the other compensation line items, we dramatically increased um based on actual data, what we were paying or what we budgeted for the part-time faculty. Um last year, it was like um forty-one and a half um thousand dollars per part-time faculty up to here. Now is forty-four point seven thousand dollars. So that cost went up, so we have to anticipate that, and we increase the cost um correspondingly.
Okay. All right, that's, that's helpful to understand. Um when I look at classified salaries uh and then classified administrative salaries, there was some kind of a strange flip that happened where in twenty twenty-three, we'd budgeted, or we had the actials of six million and twenty-five million. And then we flipped it the next year, so that classified salaries were at twenty-eight million, and then the admin salaries were at six million. Was that just a line item error? Was that a different way of categorizing the same expenditure? This was like a.
I see, I see where you're coming. I'd have to look at that um specifically. That could have been um could have been, but let me, I would have to look at that.
All right, it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a big variance. And maybe it's an error, one way or another, should probably get cleaned up in the book.
Yeah.
Um and then I've got a question about the SCIF. So the way we're talking about it, it seems like we're just like throwing up our hands and say, you know what, we're just not gonna hit these SCIF goals. We're gonna sh- we're gonna fall short. We're falling short right now. We're gonna continue to fall short. And what I'm wondering is, where are the principal, and I don't mean that in a defeatist way. I mean, maybe that's just like, that's the reality, the raw reality is, we're not gonna hit these goals. But what I'm curious about is, where are the principal areas that where we're falling short in the SCIF? And then secondly, the SCIF is a political document. It it, you know, it's, it's being put together by the legislature and and there's jockeying all over the state for like, well, we want to fund this and and we don't want to fund that. And some districts are benefited and some are not. And I'm wondering, like I know Ron Gerhart, for example, has for years been leading a group of urban districts to change some of the SCIF calculations and some of the financial aid calculations. When we look at the SCIF, is there a political solution to the SCIF or is this really just like, no, the SCIF is what the SCIF is, it's a fair document, we're just falling short in these areas? So I've got a complicated question there about how to understand our relationship to the SCIF. And that's partly a question for you, Vice Chancellor, and it's partly a question for you, Chancellor.
Okay, well, let me um, let me take a stab at it first and then I'll let um the chancellor have whatever remarks um that she would like to make. Um so first of all, we don't have a target. We have um a methodology for calculating revenue, okay? And so it's based on a variety of metrics. And so we get what we earn based on those metrics and the rules. In terms of three-year averaging for some, one, we use um the prior year. So all of those rules apply, and then you calculate that, and you get what you get. There are certain state provisions. The hold harmless is a state provision that is a safeguard. And so what we have now is a change to that safeguard provision. So no longer are we doing cumulative um colas, but we're establishing a funding floor. Okay, so, yes, there is the, a CEO task force that looks at policy related to funding. I'm on it. And so we do talk about changes that we can make to that, to make it fairer uh and things like that. So there's ongoing conversation. Um it's gonna be um a a pretty significant lift to sort of get rid of it. But there may be an opportunity to make some um incremental policy changes that um the governor and the state legislature may be amenable to. And so we continue to do work um to try to make suggestions and collaborate with the state chancellor's office to get a sense of what that might be.
So let me also thank you, Doctor Jones, let me add on. Um so I want to be really clear that nobody's giving up on anything. Um we're very committed to student success in this district and have been working really hard on it. So to understand sort of the question that you're asking, this is what we talked about in the learning sessions around the SCIF um that some of the trustees attended. The student success, you know, funding formula, three components, right? So trustee Gonzalez, you and I think it's important to understand that it's a complicated formula. Um credit three-year average, basic allocation is seventy percent, so right, that's just enrollment on its own, three-year average. Those are the things. So that's what you see in the change of just seeing when our numbers are going down, we're being funded at a higher F T S level than we're actually making, right? That's just something we have to contend with. A lot of districts are contending with. So we're out doing outreach efforts, we're working, our enrollment has been rising, but is it rising at the rate that we want, right? To get us to that place where, again, the hold harmless is less than, that's hard, but seventy percent of that. So we're not giving up on that. We're working hard on doing that. That's the basic allocation, seventy percent. Then you start to look at the supplemental allocation, which is twenty percent. That's for serving A B five forty students. The number of Pell Grant recipients we have, Promise Grant recipients. We need to improve our financial aid, our infrastructure, getting students to completion with those Pell Grant applications, doing FAFSA programs, doing these kind of things. We're working on that now. The colleges are talking. The college presidents have been, lots of conversation about our financial aid offices, the work that we can be doing collectively to optimize what we're doing as our students are going through. So we see a real potential and opportunities for those um those areas. And each of those has a rate based on headcount. So again, if we only serve six hundred and forty-one A B five forty students last year, well, what does that do, right? If we raise the number of A B five forty students that we serve, right? That number calculation goes up. It's not on a three-year average. It's a little different. So then I want to just be really clear that the student success allocation part of the SCIF is something we're very committed to. So that's ten percent of the allocation. And again, that goes to what? How we're actually doing. So we're continuing to increase our rates of associate degree for transfer, right? We have students who are actually earning degrees at higher rates. We saw an increase in the number of students getting degrees from Laney College. We're gonna continue doing that work, getting our students to completion, working on how we're working together on our scheduling, making sure students can get the classes that they want. So we get different modes of points and values based on those things, and those happen in those years. So I think it's important to know that we're not doing that. I want to just also offer that there are points and metrics. So you heard Doctor Jones say today that we added fifteen additional F T F in a time when actually it's very hard to add additional dollars. We added fifteen additional, and ten of that is going to dual enrollment. There is, again, money for students that we serve who are dual enrolled. So we're absolutely trying to find ways to do this. No giving up. This is a, actually, I'm very proud of this budget, the way that we come at it, the way that we're trying to show transparency. But everything baked into this is about making sure that we're still, at the same time, as trying to optimize and think about what we can do to do savings, is continuing to work towards those portions of the SCIF that are gonna help lead us out of that.
So if I could just follow up, I I don't mean to be critical when I'm saying, you know, we're, we're looking at SCIF targets and we're saying realistically, this is where we're gonna be, and we're making budget projections based on where we think we'll hit SCIF targets. Maybe we'll do better, maybe we won't. I don't know. I'm presuming that the, you know, the, every person involved in budgeting in in the district is looking and saying, how can we fund performance in these areas and we do the best we can? But I also want to note that the SCIF is not a neutral document. A lot of us in the state, as the SCIF was being fought over, really opposed it. Said this is not equitable, it's not student-centered. The legislature and the Board of Governors, et cetera, they came to the legislation that they came to. But that's not just a fixed thing. That's something that can change. And I think to the extent that we understand our students and don't simply accept the formula as the definition of student success. And instead say, what do we internally at Peralta, in this district, in this community, how do we think about student success that we're not doing? And could we change the funding formula better to reflect those goals? That's a political process, and I think that's where the board can be more informed, because we're the political body here. You're the administrative body, you've hit the targets that are set. But, you know, the California Community College League engages in lobbying over the funding formula. We have influence there, and we could participate in that if we thought about it. And so that's all. And I'm not, I I really don't mean to be critical of anything that we're doing here. We're doing as well as we can do. We're fighting hard for success, but the way the funding formula defines success isn't necessarily what we should say. Oh, yeah, that's, if we hit that, we're doing it perfectly. Probably not. There are probably all sorts of other things that we could be doing that could be reflected in different legislation if we had the political insight and then the political power to do it. That's all. Thanks.
Yeah, so trustee Napolea Bell-Lorice had her hand up on.
Trustee?
Yeah, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um a couple things. So I'll try to make this quick, but I do have more things. So first, let me just say, kudos. This is so much cleaner, so much clearer um and and truly more intentional. It's actually probably the best budget book I've seen since my second half of the second term. And and it's reader-friendly. It is far less opaque. Um and the fact that it's in eighty pages as opposed to the hundred and eighty-five pages of all of the other budget books in the past says a lot. Um so kudos to all the hard work that you put, all of you as a collective, uh put forth in creating this budget book. And here are some of the things that I just wanted to point out, because I think that they're worthy of discussing or at least commenting positively on. This is also the very first time, but I felt like the parcel tax table and the parcel tax information really answered a lot of questions that have been, to a certain extent, unanswered or not answered well in the past. The BAM percentages and the allocation and the table that you have on page thirteen is again incredibly clear and speaks to the many questions that people have asked in this district about how is the parcel tax being allocated and and how much for instruction, non-instruction. And you've done it, you've all done it in a manner that is thoughtful and in a manner that makes sense. And it's very clear for the public, since we are the stewards of public funds um and and to the board. And I think we've been asking for this for a while. On page fifteen, when you put forth the re- the revenues and expenditures and you bring forth that eleven point five delta or the deficit, I really appreciate that you put forth, and again, when I say you, I mean all of you, that you put forth the thought process there. Number one, you have put forth that there is a delta, that's almost twelve million dollars. But you also put forth how you came to resolving or how you will be coming to resolving this this situation before the end of the fiscal year. And I think that the conversations that you're having within the committees, uh shared governance, but also, again, kind of thinking it through and divvying it up into those three possible pockets also allows us as board members to not just see that there's a deficit and to not just hear what we've often heard in the fa- in the past, which is that we're going to be using the vacancies as a way to solve it. But it is beyond that. And we're also seeing through the table and through your discussion and through the budget book that you're doing it this in a very thoughtful and very um kind of democratic way or or a very, um again, just a very thoughtful way. And then on page thirty-seven of the budget book, and I have to say, this is the part of the budget book that that I am most ratified about. You have your multi-year funding and the multi-year budget. And we've started to see that in the budget books, and we didn't see it for a while, which is one of the reasons why it was issued for A C C J C. But we've started seeing it. But if you look at this year, what you all have done that's quite different, I'm looking at it right now, is you've laid out twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And we are finally seeing the potential deltas in terms of our revenues and expenses. You've laid out that for twenty-five, twenty-six, we are going to be possibly looking at an eighteen point four reduction, eighteen point four million dollar reduction. In twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're probably gonna be looking at a twenty-seven million dollar reduction. And in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we're gonna be looking at a thirty-seven million dollar uh reduction. And these are really important, because if we compare what you all have done with this budget book, with multi-year budgeting in previous budget books, sure, our expenses. with multi-year budgeting in previous budget books, sure, our expenses and our revenues for the most part stay constant. And sure, the expenses are increased a little bit for the subsequent years. But never is the question of proposed reductions or possible reductions ever laid out in red and ever laid out for the whole community to kind of see and understand. And I think that this is really important for us as board members, but it's also really important for the district and for the community and the public to know that we have to figure out what we're going to be doing in the forthcoming years. Because our expenditures are going to be increasing, our revenues are going to be flat, and there are going to be very large gaps between our expenses and our revenues. So again, I don't think I have a question unless you have any comments on that. But I just have to say, thank you for this budget presentation. Thank you for this budget book. And thank you for making, which is making this budget and the budget book so easy to read, but also really helpful in allowing us as board members to realize where we are, where we were, we will potentially be going and what we need to be doing in order to ensure that we're in a better place in the subsequent years.
Well, thank you very much, Cindy, for those comments. Um, we want to make this, um, a tool for planning. We want to make this a tool for planning. And so that was, um, our intent. And that's why we also, in the multi-year, um, projection, these are estimates. But what we try to do is to make sure that you understood the notes, which indicate what our assumptions were and how we arrived at those numbers. So you don't have to guess. We, we put it there for you in black and white. Okay. Thank you all.
So just a final question. That's okay. Um, again, congratulations. I want to echo my fellow board members, sentiments around, um, you know, the process, the result here that we have, um, and unanimous approval by the PBC that we were in a very different place last year. Um, and I think it speaks, um, lar- in large volume to our chancellor and the leadership she's providing, uh, to this district and how you've been able to adapt to, um, those recommendations by the board, Dr. Jones. So thank you. Um, I have a question, just, and this might be more for the chancellor. Um, in the closing statements really, and to what, um, trustee Napolea Bellarriese just mentioned in terms of the planning for future years, um, and the, the revenue gaps and expense gaps that we're going to face. Can you speak more to, um, as we think about what kind of structural changes we need to make and operational changes we need to make? I know we've, we've heard about the bu- budget reduction teams. That sounds like a very inclusive process. I wonder if you could speak to your vision about how that's done in a way that brings people along with us.
Well, thank you for the question and just appreciate the support from the board. And I want to thank again, Dr. Jones and the entire finance team for all their work. I think really what we're trying to do is actually have a different conversation around participatory governance. And how do we engage everybody in the conversation about what this is, right? Like student success is not one person's job alone or retention or outreach. Similarly, is the way that we look at this budget, the way we look at, you know, um, supporting the district going forward that we're all collectively in this. And so this last year, through the listening sessions and the conversations, uh, with leadership, um, both the faculty classified leadership, um, the administrators, has really been about where do we sort of center the problems and put those questions out? So part of the transparency with this budget is to bring it back to participatory governance and say, these are things that we want to talk, these are the conversations we want to be having, not about the vote yes or the no or the whatever, but like substantive conversations about what we want to do. So what type of instruction do we want to offer? What kind of services do we want to do? How do we want to think about transportation? What is a student's life cycle through our institutions? And how do we get the barriers out of the way in terms of them getting financial aid, enroll the classes? So we're having much more concentrated conversations that are starting, have, have already begun. And the hope is to kick off a, um, more inclusive participatory governance that actually is focused on the things that we actually need to talk about. So that's what I really am hoping. And so we've been working with, um, I want to just, uh, thank Dr. Goldstein, Mr. Chad Henry, PGC, uh, leadership for really helping galvanize those conversations that we've had about participatory governance. We have a model and conversation, um, hopefully moving forward that will actually allow for us to have this sort of work done. I know our vice presidents and our presidents are in these conversations now as well. So that could be anything from optimizing the way we plan our schedule district-wide, to the way we offer our support services, to looking at economies of scale around transportation, um, agreements or vendor contracts or how we buy supplies. So we're really trying to look across the whole institution. Um, I look at, um, our incredible CTO, Antoine Muhly, who's sitting here. And I think about the way in which we buy services and think about what we procure related to computers and hardware and how we're thinking about those things. How can we be smart about serving and supporting the needs of the colleges? So we're really going to be looking in every nook and cranny and getting everybody actively engaged. This isn't the chancellor's job alone. It isn't on the board. It is really for us collectively to be able to do this. And that's why this budget is so special in my mind, is giving us hopefully a year to really actually have a holding pattern to try to see what we can actually do together. So I'm pretty excited about the opportunity.
Okay. I'd like to add one other comment to the chancellor's comment. We're looking at not just making changes to reductions on the expense side. We're also looking at opportunities to enhance the revenues by being much, much more strategic in the way in which we accrue enrollment as well as, um, as well as student success and in terms of the supplemental. So we're using the aspects of the student-centered funding formula in more strategic ways that we believe are going to enhance our revenues in the future as well. Uh, so, so it's not just looking at cutting. It's looking at optimizing, growing our revenues in thoughtful and strategic ways by collaborating and, um, and pursuing a multi-pronged approach.
Thank you. And thank you chancellor for laying out your vision. It's what we've been at last year. We had a long conversation about exactly that kind of process. And it's really gratifying to hear that we're headed in that direction. Vice President Quinlan.
Yes, um, I'm not sure how relevant this question is, uh, for me, for, just for understanding. If, if we had the income we wanted regardless of whole harness or if we, if we actually earned that income, it looks to me like we would want around 161, 162 million dollars to fully fund everything that we have outlined in this budget. Is that a good estimate? That's just adding what our, um, old harmless, uh, is, I mean, the, the, uh, hold harmless, uh, calculation plus, the 2% deficit.
Yeah, no, I would actually say if we look at, um, what the expense budget is for 24, 25, that's 174 million dollars. So, um, so what we would want is it to be that or more, preferably more, because guess what? Costs always are going to increase. They rarely go down unless you are making structural changes to your operations. And so you would want it at a minimum of 174 for like 24, 25, and then, um, having it grow. But have your revenues, um, growing at a faster rate than your expenses. That's what you want.
So right now we're about $44 million short of that.
Yeah, um, something like that in terms of, excuse me, in terms of, um, the general portion of, yeah.
Okay. Any final questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Jones. Thank you chancellor. All right. With that, we're moving to 5.1, approval of all consent items.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussions?
Student trustee Massan?
Yes.
Just, uh, student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Euan?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bellarriese?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Point of order. All right. So.
Uh, point of order. Uh, yeah, that's okay. Thank you, uh, president, uh, Gonzalez Brito. I want to take a moment, um, to say thank you to the board of trustees for tonight. Formally approving, uh, the hire of Ms. Melanie Dixon as the next, uh, president of the College of Alameda. Uh, Ms. Dixon brings, um, a depth and breadth of experience, um, in the California Community College system with a laser focus on student success, basic needs, equity, um, and really has a demonstrated sort of authentic leadership style that is grounded in diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, we are really incredibly lucky to have, uh, Melanie join us as, uh, the next president and join, uh, really a bunch of incredible presidents, I wanted to say. Um, and so just really grateful to have her here and she's here tonight. So I wanted to welcome Melanie, congratulate you again and have you say some brief remarks if you'd like.
Thank you, uh, president Gonzalez Brito, members of the board, chancellor Gilchristson. I just want to thank you all so much. I'm super excited about joining the Peralto Community College District. Uh, one, for what, uh, president Gonzalez Brito highlighted, which is our chancellor is phenomenal and I'd follow her anywhere to do this work. So really appreciate working under your leadership. But also this phenomenal team of presidents that you have being in good partnership. And most importantly, College of Alameda is a special place. Um, there's so much opportunity. So when we talk about, uh, the budget, um, I'm excited to delve in with my team and figure out those opportunities to bring in more revenue um, as it relates to innovation. So with that being said, I came on the right night. I got to get the, the understanding of where we stand and roll back my sleeves and work along, uh, partnership with this team in the college and our chancellor, uh, to do some great work for the district. So thank you so much. It's a pleasure. Look forward to serving, uh, the College of Alameda community and also Peralta.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Wanted to say again, um, president Dixon will begin on July 15th. And I want to just again, take a moment just to thank, uh, uh, our illustrious, uh, acting president, uh, Dr. Pamela Lester for supporting and extending her stay until, um, uh, president Dixon begins. So congratulations again, and thank you for being here tonight.
Welcome, president Dixon. We look forward to working with you. All right. With that, we'll move to 9.1, consider adoption of resolution number 2324, 124 of intention to convey temporary construction easement. Um, and this is, uh, the first step in this process. And so, um, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
I don't need a motion.
Oh, we don't need a motion too?
We need a motion too.
Oh, we don't need a motion today?
It's an action item.
We didn't need a motion today. Yeah. Uh, so sorry, any discussion?
President Gonzalez Brito, could I also, uh, just expediently move item 9.2, uh, which is a piggyback contract uh, for a technology equipment? I, I don't think these are, either of these are controversial.
I'm sorry, who made the original motion?
I did.
You did? So you're adding, okay.
Yeah, and trustee Withrow seconded.
Withrow was the second.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion?
Student trustee Massan?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Euan?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bellarriese?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. So that brings us to our trustee reports. I'll start to my left.
I don't have anything to report.
I also don't have anything.
Just want to show appreciation again to the finance team for such a great budget. Um, I'm going to dive a little bit deeper into it, um, before our next reading. But I just want to show appreciation for you, Dr. Gilchristson. So appreciate it.
Um, I, I wasn't able to make last, uh, sessions meeting. So I just wanted to say, you know, congrats to all the graduates. I went to the graduations. It was lovely. There was a lot of energy. It was beautiful. There was more I was going to say, but at this point it's like three weeks later, but it was, it was lovely. So thanks. Thanks for, um, I just, I just love to be a part of this. This is why I'm doing this as well, to see the success of the students. Um, and secondly, um, I wanted to mention tomorrow, so I'm on the, the Alameda County Veteran Commission. And tomorrow is, which I learned through the commission, is Women Veteran Day, uh, Women Veterans Day. And so we're trying to promote that and get the, the word out there. We have an event tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at the Alameda, um, Naval Museum, uh, for free. Just Google it. Women's, National Women's Day, Alameda, you'll find it on the Alameda post, I believe you said. Yeah. Um, free, 7 o'clock, refreshments, food, me. Please be there. All right.
No report this week.
All right.
I want to echo the congratulations to the finance team and, and the shared governance body. And in particular, I really want to thank our chancellor. Um, and we brought you to do a job. You're doing that job really, really well. Uh, it's evident in that, in the team you're bringing together. Um, and I don't mean just your administrative team. I mean, the entire team, uh, really nicely, well done. I think a lot of you know, I retired from my full-time teaching job last year, last spring. But this spring I've been back in the classroom. Um, and one of the classes I've been teaching is, uh, social movements and organizing class. It's been a lot of fun, not just because I like having contact with students, but because what I'm teaching is how do you do organizing within the community college system? And in that capacity, I, I had the, I've had the opportunity to interview, um, key statewide leaders and local leaders doing that work, um, educators in the classroom, uh, the president of, um, FAC, um, our own chancellor, uh, Brian Murphy, the former president of, uh, Deans College. And it's really just given me an opportunity again to, to be so appreciative of the work that we do, but also of the generations of people who fought to make the community colleges what they are. And we really are quite extraordinary. I don't know if students understand that because they come and it's already here. But if you talk to the people who built what we're doing right now, it's really been an extraordinary journey, um, with a lot of courage and a lot of heart. And I just feel really honored to, to serve in this capacity, uh, in every meeting that we go to here. And I'm in particular, uh, feeling very appreciative of this board of colleagues. Really a thoughtful, deliberative body, just the kind of body that I think any trustee would want to serve on anywhere in the state. And, uh, it's taken a lot of work for us to get here, but I'm really proud of us as an institution. So anyway, thank you and thank you and thank you. All right. That's it.
Trustee Withrow?
Just a brief one. Uh, this has been, uh, obviously an exciting kind of time for graduation ceremonies, whether they be for the colleges or subsegments of the colleges. This last Friday, we had a graduation from a ASTI, uh, the Alameda Science and Technology Institute, an embedded high school at, uh, the College of Alameda. And I believe I'm correct in saying this is the 15th year that they've graduated. There are a lot of statistics we can go into, but one in particular stands out. 63% of the graduates had an AA degree before they graduated from high school. 63% going in, only, there's one student that is taking a gap year. The rest are all continuing post-secondary education. Great program and, uh, when you, uh, national events and whatever, ACT, for example, it's an awful lot of people who know of and recognize ASTI. It's a great program.
Thank you for highlighting that. Um, and, uh, trustee Napolea Bellarriese, any?
Yes, I will, I will repeat, uh, what's already been stated. This is, um, this is a, a large victory. I think much of what has happened, we all know that the budget's been a point of contention and controversy for this district for a very long time, at this district for a very long time. And I have to say that many things have transpired in the past few weeks, in the past few months. And, um, and I think that we are all collectively thrilled at the good work that is happening. And, um, and we are, we're excited to see what's going to be happening in the future. And the other thing that I will just say is I, uh, congratulations again to our student trustees. I'm not going to be there to celebrate and hug you both, um, next, at the next meeting in. I'm not gonna be there to celebrate and hug you both, um, next, at the next meeting in person. But, uh, I am, I'm so glad to have seen you and, uh, meet both of you. And, uh, again, just, uh, a goodbye and a good luck and a congratulations. And that's it, it's five o'clock in the morning for me right now. So I'm enough.
Dedication. Uh, all right, we'll move to announcements, trustee, Vice President Quinlan?
So here are the announcements for June eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Number one, enrollment is open for summer and fall twenty twenty-four classes. Visit the Peralta website at www.peralta.edu. Enroll to start the application enrollment process. Two, the Bond Measure Oversight Committee will meet tomorrow, Wednesday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-four, here in the boardroom from five thirty to seven thirty PM. Number three, Juneteenth celebration. Please join Merrick College in celebrating Black liberation with engaging activities, great food, and community fellowship on Monday, June seventeenth from one to three PM, and then Newton Seal Student Lounge and patio outside. Number four, the Peralta Community College District will be closed on Wednesday, June nineteenth, in observance of Juneteenth. Number five, the Peralta Colleges are operating on four by ten summer schedules in June and July, which means most employees are working ten-hour days, Monday through Thursday, with offices closed on Fridays. And number six, the Peralta Colleges celebrate Pride Month in June. We support our LGBTQ plus students, coworkers, and community members this month and every month.
Thank you, vice president Quinlan. Uh, we're going to adjourn, but before we adjourn tonight's meeting, I would like to follow up on chancellor Gilchristson's request and take a moment of silence to remember Dr. Donald H. Godbold and Belinda Van Bueller, who both contributed so much to our district community. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We're adjourned.